Good evening. Welcome to the Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is November 21st, 2024. And to like to start by calling the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from October 24th, 2024.
I'll move to meeting minutes from October 24th, 2024.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our one hearing for the day is Attorney David Plunkett on behalf of MCP Howland-Burt Owner LLC for variance under section 6.3.A of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for setbacks to construct a support column for a 45 by 14.6 billboard facing Interstate 93 as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 3 Executive Place, Andover, Assessor's Map 115, Lot 7, Zoned Industrial 1. That was a mouthful. Name and address, please, for the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For record, David Plunkett, Office of 491 Dutton Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, here on behalf of MCP Howland-Burt LLC. And with me also is Stephen Ross, who's from American Outside Advertising LLC.
Want to talk about what we're doing here?
Sure.
Please?
So this is a situation where we're applying to the Select Board, who is the special permit grant and authority for construction of a billboard under section 6.3 of the zoning bylaw. So this has become kind of like, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Right.
And the talking with the town have made it clear that going before the Select Board, they want to be certain that any issues pertaining to necessary variances relative to the application have been resolved beforehand, that the board doesn't want to have a situation where we're presenting something and then we have to come in for relief afterwards. So this is a situation where we're requesting the grant of variances, but the grant of variances doesn't give us permission to build the billboard, that the, again, the ultimate determination is still going to be the Select Board, but it allows us to go to the Select Board for that special permit approval. If you recall, I think it was three or four years ago, the town adopted this provision of the zoning bylaw, and it was for a very good reason, to allow the town to generate revenues that a number of other communities, if you go through any of the interstate highways, especially 93 going into Boston, there are the billboard signs, and it's good for the applicant, and it's also good for the town because it allows them to generate these revenues that they're missing out on otherwise. So, you know, there have been a couple of other, you know, proposals before that didn't go through, and this site, though, has been determined, you know, that when looking at the site, this is actually the best site in the town of Tewksbury to be able to erect this billboard, have it for the purposes that were set forth in the zoning bylaw, have minimal or no impact on any party and interest, and allow the town to reap the benefits of what they intended to do when they adopted this, when they proposed this bylaw, which was then accepted at the town meeting. Regarding the requested variances, you know, one of the requests is that based upon the maximum height of a structure, and this is a, if you look at the, you know, what was in your package and, you know, what we have here, you know, in fact, this is deemed a structure because it's something that's affixed to the ground. You have the structural beam and you have the fascia board of the billboard on the top that's going to be facing out towards, with visibility towards Route 93. So with that being deemed a structure, you know, there are limitations in terms of a height of 60 feet at most if you're before the planning board with a special permit, and that's one of the things that we need the variance for because it doesn't make any sense with the application of this zoning bylaw. Based upon the, you know, the location of the billboard adjacent to the highway and the, you know, there's the dense tree growth within the Route 93 layout that you can't, if we were, if the billboard was limited to the 60-foot height, you couldn't do it. You couldn't do it. And even with a 100-foot height, there's going to be some, you know, trimming of the trees immediately adjacent to it. Again, there's no purpose to have a billboard unless there's an area of visibility from Route 93. With the initial application, we had proposed at a spot that was at the corner of the building that's constructed. And just as a background, one of the things why this property is now a viable property is because of the fact that they've built this commercial structure in the industrial zone because it has to be on a spot in which there is business use. And now with this building there, this site is now a viable site to utilize the bylaw to create, to put this billboard there. And what's happened in talking to my client, that the further determination is that the best spot is not this location in the driveway. It's moving up 500 feet along the building to this spot here. And, you know, there's still two variances that we need. We need the variance from the 1,000-foot setback from a residential U, residential zone and the setback from the highway. The setback from the highway initially was going to be 19.6 feet, now it's, I believe, 5.5 feet. But in one sense, you're abutting the highway, so what is the impact of an incremental increase from 19.5 to 5.5? It's still there. It's alongside the highway, and the sole purpose of the location of the billboard is to be seen from the highway, from the people. That's where the money is generated, that the number of views that it can get from the highway is going to generate the revenue to the builder, and that in turn generates the revenue to the town. So we have changes in, relative to the impact, you have the Route 93, and then across this, across from 93 as been shown on the plans, you have the Jenny's Way subdivision. But you have a significant vegetative buffer there, and we've done some, we have some pictures to show, hand out to you if we could, Madam Chair. And this is just shown from an overhead view that indicating that the
Thank you.
Even at the location as now proposed
Thank you.
The nearest residential dwelling is going to be 800 feet from the side. And when you look at that 800 feet, you see the density of the trees from that location. So this is something that, you know, they're not going to see it. And it should be pointed out also that in the Jenny's Way subdivision, there's a, you know, this open space as well. And that area immediately alongside the Route 93 corridor, that's all part of the open space area as well. So that's not going to be changed. No one's going to be building a house there. No one's going to be building up, and you see that sometimes along the major routes, and you'll see a house that's built right, you know, there's Route 93 and here's a house right there. But that can't happen here. That can't happen here because the subdivision as built, that's where the houses are located, and you have that open space area between it and 93. So you have all this natural buffer that they're not even going to know that it's there. And that's where, you know, you have that second handout that just shows that you have 519 feet of a dense forest buffer. So the rationale of the variance would be that, you know, this is something that can be granted and have no impact upon the residential use. And if you were there at the night of the approval of this bylaw, this 1,000-foot setback, there really wasn't a lot of talk or discussion about it. It was, you know, it's fine. This is what happens at town meetings. Someone stood up and made a proposal, and other people, oh, so, okay, that sounds good. And then they implemented the 1,000 feet. It probably doesn't make sense, but it's there. But we can show with what has just been handed to you that there's no negative impact on the, on those, on that residential use. And you've got a situation where, you know, in terms of the viability for variance, you have something that you would look at, the topography of this property in terms of, when you go down the Route 93 corridor, you see a lot of the, as you're heading into Boston, just, I think it's mostly right before you get the stone, stonem, and you have, and the property is way up high. You've got this elevation, and so, okay, you know, they can see it from, you know, from the highway, and, but this here, the topography of this parcel is such that we need to get it towards the property line and still have to do some cutting of the trees. But this proposed location would allow, with the variances that were granted, that were requested, would allow the applicant to utilize the provisions of section 6.3. It would allow the town to gain the revenue that they anticipated when they passed, proposed, and had this allowed, and it has no negative impact on any party and interest. You know, it's, you know, it's something where, it would then allow us to move forward to the Select Board with the ability for the Select Board to then decide, yep, this makes sense, this is a good location, or no, it doesn't make sense, it's not a good location. Now be the purview of the Select Board, but what we're asking the ZBA is to grant us these variances that I think with the, what we've submitted shows that we, you know, it's, it's, the request, our viable request to be granted, and it makes sense. It makes sense.
Is it a light-up sign, or is it a?
Stephen Ross, 105 Sunset Rock Road, Andover, Mass. Yes, a digital sign, and part of the package to the town is that you get dedicated public service time to advertise messages that are important to the town.
Thank you.
On your application, you're looking for variance from requirements of 6.3.A and 6.3.11?
Yes.
What's under that? 5.3.4?
Yes, 5.3.4, that's the height variance because of the structure limitation of 60 feet on the structure with other variance. And we're saying this is a structure only because of the definition within the, I think typically people would think of a structure as something where it's a building, that it's, you know, a residential building or a commercial building or something along those lines. But if you look at the definitional provisions of the bylaw, your structure is indicating anything that's permanent and affixed to the ground. And therefore, you know, what we want to make certain is that we don't go through and then have the building inspector say, oh, well, we think that, you know, even though this isn't a building anyone's going to be in, and it's not going to be something that somebody lives in, it's, you know, it is something that we believe, you know, is going to be, anything erected at a fixed location on the ground to give support, provide shelter, or satisfy other purposes. So with that or, you know, and I think it's obviously at the beginning of the definition, it's, you know, the indication that's, you know, for given shelter as a or satisfy other purposes, including the term building.
In 5.3.4?
Yeah.
Which line are you looking at for your 60-foot?
industrial 1, maximum frontage, let's see, 5.3. B may grant a, except that I
Special permit from the planning?
Permit, yes, special permit, five stories and 60 feet.
And you're looking for a variance to go 100?
We're going, yes, the sign would have to be 100 feet in order to
So you're looking at a special permit from the planning board
No.
To go 60, and you want a variance to go 100 from us?
Right.
That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
And you haven't gotten approved for the 100, for the 60 already, right?
Well, we're not looking for 60. We're looking for
Right, but you still need the approval to move it from them, don't you?
No.
No?
I wouldn't say so, no. Because the planning board is not the special permit grant and authority for billboard under 6.3. The Select Board is a, is a special permit grant and authority. So we wouldn't be even going before the planning board for this. It would only be the Select Board who would make the determination of approval or denial. And all we're looking at is the limitation on height, talking about that the, that the planning board, if they were the permit grant and authority, could give a special permit to 60 feet. And if we were going before the planning board, we'd still, we wouldn't ask planning board to approve 60 feet and then come to you for an approval for 100 feet. We'd come to you directly for 100-foot approval. And in the rationale is that, again, the billboard provision doesn't make sense otherwise because you'd have to be cutting down all the trees, which wouldn't make, you know, isn't viable.
I thought we had something about height
Yeah.
For these electronic billboards.
We've only dealt with the billboards once or twice in our time, so be patient, sorry. Just want to make sure I'm reading it right.
So, I mean, in reality, we're not asking for 100-foot variance, that is, the variance is a difference of 100 feet, the difference between a maximum of another special permit grant and authority of 60 feet to 100 feet, so it's a 40-foot differential.
That's a lot. 40 feet's a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
6.3 and 3.11.
Now, why do you have to move it so close? Why do you have to go from 25 to 5?
Because of the location of the building and to have the proximity to 93, Route 93, so that you have the visibility along Route 93.
And the pavement behind it. You can't obstruct the pavement.
All right, and there is some pavement behind the building, which, not to disturb the pavement, that would put us in the location request.
Is it a visibility, or is it the pavement?
It's a combination of both.
Because if that thing's 100 feet high?
The
20 feet really isn't going to matter.
So the property owner approved this location as long as we did not put the pole in the pavement because he needed to make sure for emergency vehicle access that that road in the back was clear. So therefore, to be off the pavement, we have to be closer to the property line with the pole.
So you're too close to the highway, you're too close to residential, and you're too high. Right?
We are a billboard that in order to be viable and utilize section 6.3 of the zoning bylaw, we need to have variances in order to have it make sense. And this is the only location in town that you're going to be able to locate a billboard like this. And I think with the, what we've submitted to the board tonight, the concerns about impact on the residential dwelling is not there in terms of the fact that we've shown that you have 519 feet of dense forest buffer between the nearest house and Route 93.
How tall are those trees in the 519 feet of dense forest buffer?
Yeah. How tall?
How tall?
So I don't have the exact height, but the oaks can generally grow to be 70 feet, and the white pines can get to be 110 feet.
Okay, and you assign 100 feet, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So you mentioned the billboard itself at 45, you mean? The height is 45, and, aren't I? May I, so I did hear when you're reading, it said 14 by 45. The actual size of the face is 14 by 48, which is what the town has approved for digital signage. Mm-hmm.
So your actual sign is 48, not 45?
14 by 48, feet 672 total square feet per side, which the town allows.
Okay.
You didn't have to, right?
No, it was, yeah, the people were notified.
Were the people on Jenny's Way notified?
They were outside of the zone of notification. We got, we, part of the application is the assessor's list of parties to be
Who'd you notify? Who'd you notify? The owner of the property that's letting you put the sign up?
So three, all properties within, excuse me, all properties within 300 feet, which we got the assessor's list from the town of Tewksbury as well as the town of Andover because it's right on the line.
What's your nearest property in Andover? Is it residential or commercial?
Commercial, industrial. Gillette, I think was the closest one.
So the people at Jenny's Way, which is the 800 feet to the nearest dwelling, are not notified?
Correct. And if everything is approved here and at the Select Board meeting, then we go to the state, and a state requirement for notifying butters is 500 feet. So depending on how far the property extends toward where we are, it may or may not fall within that.
So they still won't get notified?
Possibly not.
I think I had a problem with that on the last one, we did too.
You did.
Because there was one house that was close
You did.
They were too far away to be notified.
Yep.
There's nothing we can do. It's the way it works.
We'll have to go to town meeting and change that.
I would like to. Do you guys have any more questions? Before I open it up?
This can be two variances or just one? We're going to do one for the, for the 5.3?
Two.
And the first one up here just says one for one.
So the advantage of coming here first is just so you're going to go to the select one?
Right.
And so you've already got your variances?
Yes, they want to know whether, you know, we were in line, and then as I said, they're the final
So it was the select suggestion that you
Yes.
Here first?
Yes, and talking with the planning and development was, let's, you know, have this set as the logistical chronology, go to ZBA, and then we go to Select Board. And again, the Select Board, a variance doesn't allow us to do anything.
Right.
The Select Board is going to be the one who decides whether they're going to approve or not approve, and then Mr. Ross was saying that then even when they approve, then there's
The State.
Further.
Correct.
I don't like the way the first ones are lined here. I don't like that. But it is what it is.
And if I, my, there were actually three variances because one of the requirements under 6.3 is to have a landscape buffer around the base of the pole, and, you know, we're just saying, granting fairness from that because it doesn't make any sense. Someone's going to see it anyway, so, you know, what's the purpose of having that?
At least it has one idea. And on the actual application, there's more. 6.3.A and 3.11. And section 5.3.4.
So that's true, the variance is 3.3.
It's three. 6.3.A and 3.11, 6.3.11, and then 5.3.4.
5.3.4.
Yeah.
3.11 is the landscape.
Right. So there's three variances we're approving tonight under this one application.
And a 10-foot landscaping buffer you just don't think is necessary?
Yeah, who's going to see it?
Well, you'd be five feet off the property line, so you really can't do it anyways.
Yeah, and it's along the 93.
It's not a special permit.
No one's going to see it.
We could just say for variance is
Do you know, kind of a random question, where is the right-of-way, where is the edge of the 93 right-of-way compared to pavement?
Compared to the Route 93 pavement?
You're on 93 North, right?
Yeah.
It's about 12 feet off the pavement. There's a fence right there, so that gives us just enough room. The diameter of the pipe is about 55 inches, so it gives us enough room to put the pipe off the pavement so there's no issue with vehicular traffic.
So you're 17 feet off the pavement?
No, we're probably about 12 feet off the pavement. Let me rephrase. The property line is about 12 feet off the pavement.
Okay, and you're five feet off the property line?
Yes.
So you're about 17 feet off the pavement.
You got me confused.
Jump out. I asked you the edge of the right-of-way, edge of 93 right-of-way?
Yes.
The edge of pavement?
Yes.
You say about 12 feet?
Correct.
Which I don't think is correct. I think it's a lot further than that.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Are you saying, are you saying that the pavement of 93?
How far is your sign off the pavement?
Oh, off the pavement of 93, not the pavement behind the building? I understand what you're saying. I think it's about 95 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, I was thinking the other pavement.
So you're a solid 100 feet off, off a pavement?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's a little different.
Okay, I thought you meant the other pavement.
All right.
93, there's 300.
I have no more questions.
All right, it's being a public hearing. Let's open it up. Does anybody have anything they want to add?
Hello, everyone. Mark Krappman, 101 Mermerack Meadows Lane. When, we brought this to the town, we're looking for revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the town. for the town. And we've been looking to try to get billboard companies to come in, and we haven't had a lot of success for some of the things. When we brought this to town meeting, we were talking about the height and the variance. I've seen these billboards fall off their place. The higher they are, honestly, the better they are. If residents are thinking about it, they're thinking about putting in lower. But what they don't take into consideration is that you've got to cut the trees to get sight distance. So the higher they are, the less trees you have to remove. So if the trees are there, that's caused, that's creating a buffer. The businesses, the homes and everything, even though they're not sound barriers, you've got a buffer there. So the higher they go up, the less trees that have to be removed. The state highway does not want to remove trees off the highway layout because they're planted there and they're a natural buffer. People drive along the highway. The higher they are, the, these billboards are built to have the back, nothing on the back. So they're not, you don't see anything on the back of it. When you're in the back of that property, even though it's a billboard, the, the light is shined toward the highway. So you can see it from somewhere far. And the, the goal of the state is to see it from 250 feet in each direction. So if the town allows them to build it a little bit higher, that allows it to see without them cutting a whole bunch of trees. Nobody wants to cut a bunch of trees. It looks horrible, honestly, if they have to talk to trees or remove them. So the higher it goes, the better off it is for removing trees out there. It also helps the neighbors. So where it's, you know, if you have neighbors that are out, the more you remove, the easier it is to see this one way or another. So you really don't want to see the billboard. All you want to do is have it so it's facing. Now, we've got other boards in town that are like the hotel boards and the other ones that are up there that we've allowed before, that like, you know, and it's part of economic development. We're trying, you know, we, we allow those so people know where the hotels are or there's businesses that are going out there. Having this out there will be beneficial to our town. We'll, we'll get publicity on there. We, we get so much messaging that we can use as the town to promote our website, promote our economic development. That's some of the things that we're trying to do. And then the revenue that we're getting from this, we've already dedicated it to building sidewalks in our community. So any billboards that's built, we've already decided the money that's generated from it is going to add for accessibility to our town. We have a lot of sidewalks that need to be built in this town, especially off of 133 and going down Livingston Street and all. We've been working really hard to try to find additional revenue to get the kids safely to our parks. So we're looking to bring in additional revenue. This will bring in a couple of million dollars over 20 years that will put in quite a bit of sidewalks that will help us. So like I said, we're, we're looking to find ways. They're looking, what they're looking to do, honestly, I'm not really concerned about. They're business people, they're looking to do what they're doing. But as a town perspective, we're looking to bring in some revenue. It's a low impact to us. It's off the highway. It doesn't really affect, it's, it's going to be in a commercial place. It's so far away that it really doesn't affect the residents. And the infuriating part is that, like, we've had a couple of billboard offices to put in, and we didn't take advantage of them. Then we'll put one right on 495. It's literally overhanging Tuxbury property. We had no say about it. They, they're getting all the revenue from it, and it's right on, it's on, when you get on Route 38 and as soon as you come off the ramp section, there's a billboard there. We haven't had one resident complain about that billboard. But, see, and it's much lower, it's right where you're seeing it, and it's not far from residents. But we don't, we didn't have a variance. We didn't have any say on that because it was built in the city wall. So I'm looking to find a way that we can get something to bring revenue to us. Our police department will have public service notices out there. Economic Development will have something where they can put messages to promote businesses in this town. We're trying to bring businesses to this town. Having a billboard there that can advertise, say, you know, shop Tuxbury, shop this area, that'll be very beneficial to us. That, like, telling people, get off the next ramp. We have these businesses there. So we're trying to recruit them to come to this town. So as my perspective, I, I like them because it brings revenue to our community. It helps us build sidewalks. It's a low impact to us. And like I said, we, we need all the revenue we can get. So that's one of the reasons that we try to bring them here. We've had difficulty because of, it's so difficult because it has to be out of so many different, it can't be near a cemetery, it can't be, there's all, the state has all these guidelines, and you can't do so many things. So there's very limited opportunities, even though we have all the highway of 495 and 93. The only reason that this one became very viable is because somebody built a warehouse there. That warehouse, by the way, that's in the town of Tuxbury, is vacant. There's nobody in there. Why? Because nobody knows it's there. Having a billboard there that says, we have a place where we can get business revenue in will be very helpful to us. That, maybe somebody will see that if they put a billboard sign up there that says, we have a place that's here. It's enormous, a storage facility. That's whatever may go in there. Be nice to see if we can fill that up and get that tax revenue for the town. I appreciate you taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, ma'am, sure, just, you know, I think that we meet the criteria for a grant of a variance. And just to be certain, what we're looking at is, under Section 6.3A, it's going to be a variance of the 25-foot setback from interstate 93 to, I believe it's 5.5 feet.
Yes.
And then, you know, that we're, a variance from the 1,000 feet, within the 1,000 feet of a residential district use. And then on Section 3.11, the, along the base of the, of the column to do landscaping where no one's going to see it. And then, excuse me, 5.3.4, the height, allowing it to be a height as a structure deemed as a structure of 100 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close both spots in the air.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, one of you two need to make a motion?
All right, yeah. All right. Oh, you go ahead.
Oh, you get all the notes.
I just wrote them out.
Huh?
I just wrote it out. You can read my check and scratch by all means.
You want me to do it?
It's easy to read.
Good luck, Godspeed. Horrible payment check.
So they're all variances, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we can do them all together?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve David Plunkett on behalf of MCP Howard Howland Burt Owner LLC for a variance under Section 6.3.A of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws for setbacks to construct a support column for a 48 by 14.6 billboard facing intersection 93. As shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at 3 Executive Place, Andover. Assessors map 115, Lot 7, zoned industrial one. We'll have to modify that a little bit. The variance will be for Section 6.3.A to be 5.5 feet from the highway right-of-way.
Yes, yes.
Also a variance from 6.3.11 for the 20, 10-foot landscaping buffer. And 5.3.4 to change the height to 100 feet.
In 6.3.8, also the residential. There are two within 6.3.
Oh, yeah, the residential as well. Yeah, 1,000-yard setback.
Nice notes. And 6.3-
That's the original, anyway. That, that was read originally, anyway.
6.3.A to go from 1,000 feet from residential to 800 to the nearest dwelling, 800 feet.
Thank you, Rob.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Could I just say clarification?
Go ahead, sorry, sorry.
Because it's, it's 800 feet to the nearest dwelling, not the nearest dwelling zone, so.
Is that what you said, dwelling?
That's what his paper said, that's why I said it.
Yeah.
This is not clear.
It's-